I have a motion to approve the minutes.
One second, please, Madam Clerk. The Presidents of the Sheriff's Officers Union and the Sheriff Supervisors Union are representatives here. I've been asked, and I've conferred with some other Commissioners, a statement was made to them recently at a meeting that only certain Commissioners support the Sheriff's Department. On behalf of all our Commissioners, we have never denied the Officers any requests that have been made to this Board. Just for the record, so please ensure your membership that all the Commissioners always support the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
That doesn't mean you shouldn't come here and speak if you've got a problem.
Right. Definitely.
Please note that Commissioner Ponte Lipsky just entered.
Okay, continue now.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the caucus meeting of April 22nd, 2025, and the regular meeting of April 24th, 2025? Motion.
Rodriguez and Sedano.
Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The next order of business is to turn it over to the Administration.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, we have one item for the Board's consideration. It is a resolution amending a contract with French and Perello so that they can design a bike lane on the 14th Street Viaduct. The, the design fee and the amendment i- is for $107,221.
Want to?
Second.
Uh, that would be number 19. Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Hold on on that, I think, um, uh, 14th Street Viaduct shared bicycle lane, I'll sponsor.
You guys know.
Well, you know what?
The Board. The Board.
Board as a whole, because it affects, uh, three or four different municipalities.
Municipalities, okay. Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes, number on that, please.
19.
19, thank you. Continue.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the only item I have.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay, um, I have one that I'm going to bring off the floor. It's going to be Resolution 20. It's condemning racism and affirming the commitment to an inclusive environment for all people.
Board as a whole.
That's number 20. That's Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Is Dr. Manuel Sanchez in the audience? Is he here? All right, this is number one. Uh, this is to honor and commend Dr. Sanchez. So before I read that, do I have a sponsor and a second?
Board as a whole.
Board as a whole. Okay. To honor and, to honor and commend Dr. Manuel Sanchez, Medical Director of Medevue Psychiatric Hospital, on his retirement from the County of Hudson on February 1st, 2025, after seven years of service. Whereas Dr. Manuel Sanchez has enjoyed a long and extensive 34-year career serving as a psychiatrist in behavioral healthcare settings throughout New Jersey and New York. And whereas after graduating from University de Gaulle Medical School in Ecuador and completing his psychiatric residency at Lincoln Medical and Mental Health in New York, Dr. Sanchez began his career in Lincoln Medical and Mental Health Center as an emergency room psychiatrist. And whereas Dr. Sanchez continued his career as a psychiatrist at Bergen County Hospital, Triadas Hospital, Beth, Newark Beth Israel, St. Michael's Medical Center, UMDJ University Behavioral Healthcare, and Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare. And whereas Dr. Manuel Sanchez began his career in Hudson County Government on September 18th, 2017, as a psychiatrist at Medevue Psychiatric Hospital. And whereas Dr. Sanchez was promoted to Medical Director at NPH on May 1st, 2019. And whereas Dr. Sanchez exhibited long clinical leadership by ensuring quality patient care and providing guidance and support to the clinical staff. And whereas during his tenure in the county, Dr. Sanchez was a valuable asset in guiding the clinical care of NPH during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Dr. Sanchez is honored for his life-saving action on November 6th, 2023, when he heroically and inspirally performed CPR on employee when she went into cardiac arrest. And whereas the county executive in this board will join with the entire Hudson County family in honoring and commending Dr. Manuel Sanchez on his retirement after seven years of devoted county service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Hudson that they join with County Executive Craig Guy in expressing deep gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Manuel Sanchez for his seven years of dedicated service to the county. They join with the county executive in wishing Dr. Manuel Sanchez plenty of good times with his beloved family. And wishing Dr. Manuel Sanchez years of good cheer, good health, and the enjoyment of retirement. Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Hmm.
Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Congratulations, Dr. Sanchez. Doctor, if you'd like to come up and say a few words before we take a photo with you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, this is an honor to receive the, this award. Um, I really enjoy working at Hudson County and Medevue Psychiatric Hospital, where we provide service for the more needed. And I'm still working for Hudson County as a PRDM at the, at the Hudson County Correctional Facility. I have been there for 21 years, and I'm still there. So, uh, I really, I appreciate this honor I received. Uh, and what I did, I did because I was trained to do so. And thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Doctor, Doctor, come up with, Doctor, we'll take a photo with you, okay? Muchas gracias por tus servicios. Everybody. Let's get the good doctor in the middle, under the emblem.
Uncle.
Under the emblem. Guys, get in. Got it?
I got it.
Me, the center up. Okay, continue, Madam Clerk.
According to the policy set by the Board of County Commissioners, members of the public are asked to limit their comments to five minutes when discussing agenda, agenda items, and three minutes on the conclusion of the meeting for persons who submitted a written request to discuss matters of public interest. At this time, the public may address the Board on any item on the agenda only. Please keep your comments limited to five minutes. Are there any speakers on the agenda items only?
I have a question. When, when are we changing to five minutes at the beginning for everyone that we agreed to at the last meeting?
Yeah, Ed, Bill, Eddie's going to tweak something, there was a little something in that, then we'll vote on it. Okay, just to tweak on something, the 12 o'clock.
I'm sure a lot of people would have liked to do that today.
Thank, continue, Madam Clerk.
There are no speakers on the agenda items. May I have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda?
Motion, begging.
Yeah.
Sedano and Lipsky.
Before, before we vote, I mean, I asked for a lot of information, I believe it was on item number seven? At least, the, the one related to the services to be provided to youth that were not being provided.
Commissioner, that was sent to you via email this afternoon. But I don't know, perhaps the clerk put it on, on.
Yeah, I mean, I need a hard copy, right?
That's all, no, no, no.
You're assuming that I have an email in front of me at all time. I assume it gets brought to me at the meeting, and that way, if I have a question or additional information, I can, I can read it here while I'm here.
No, no, we'll, we'll provide, I just wanted to let you know that we did send that information out, but we can provide a hard copy. The clerk was copied on it, so they'll make a, a copy for you.
Good.
But I mean, the answer to that could even affect my vote on the, on the item, so.
Okay, Bill, you want to hold off on your vote to get it then?
Well, I mean, if you can get it to me now, I mean.
He's printing it, I think Cham is printing it right now.
We have it.
Cham. If you can, perfect, put me a copy. Okay. Okay. While Billy's browsing, Carol, go ahead.
You want me to move on?
Yeah, just come back to me.
I have one ordinance for introduction. It's a bond ordinance providing for various 2025 park improvements by and in the County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, appropriating $22,601,740. Therefore, including grant, state grants received or expected to be received in the aggregate amount of $3,099,000, and authorize the issuance of $18,631,100 in bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof. For introduction. Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
We have no ordinances for second reading.
You can go through the resume.
Take the, take the roll call on the agenda.
On the agenda items, okay. Uh, Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Just come back to me.
I'll come back. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Day.
I'll vote yes.
Yes. This concludes the items of business on today's agenda. Are there any comments from the Commissioners on the business of the Board?
Billy?
Yeah, so I mean, I've just perused this information, um, you know, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it today, but, so I have serious concerns after just perusing it as to what level of staff, um, oversight was done of this contract in the past. So then obviously, I have serious concerns over the level of staff oversight and involvement in administering the, the contract going forward with a new, with a new vendor. Um, I don't know whether you want to do it through a committee or whatever, but again, these.
You're the committee, you, Bobby, and Al.
Okay, then that's fine, we, 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 we need to meet um, right, uh, bef, maybe before the next meeting with the appropriate county staff, as well as, as well as, um, the new, the new vendor. Um, two, two issues that I have additionally as it relates to this. I know that often after a contract is approved, there is, there is time lapse before they start because of your agreements that may need to be executed. We can't allow that to happen here. We've failed to provide these services to youths being held in a detention facility for five months now. And we were put on notice two days ago. As I noted then, we should have been put on notice the minute you found out about it. But I'm putting you on notice now, that if you fail have, if you fail to have that vendor to start to deliver these services, I mean, tomorrow's Friday, Monday's a holiday. If they're not there starting to deliver services by next Tuesday, I'm putting the county on notice. You're liable for the, any effect or impact on, on a youth that either isn't re-entered into school or whatever other, um, services are, are supposed to be provided to.
Madam Clerk, schedule that, please, with that committee, with those committee members.
We'll do that.
Yeah, al- also, I ju, I just, you know, we do have, we do have, um, leadership from some of our unions, and i- if, if they are going, if they are going to speak, I think we should extend them the courtesies to speak first. Um, even if they didn't sign up to speak, they are, they, they are integral to, um, operation of the county government. We're, we're going into a, a budget review period. We're having public hearings, well, not public hearings, committee hearings on it next week. And, uh, you know, I would, I would like to, to hear from, hear from them.
Okay, continue, Madam Clerk.
Are there any comments from the Chief of Staff to the County Executive?
Hi, everybody. Um, briefly, I need to tell you that my heart is broken right now. There were two people killed yesterday in DC. And they were killed because of hate and war. We're about to enter Memorial Day weekends. And there are a lot of people killed that we remember on Memorial Day weekend also. War is not fun, war is horrible, but words that we say matter. And I'd like to remind everyone in this room, everyone out there, that your words do matter. Your words can inspire hate or not. And I'd like to ask, especially in light of, of your own and Miriam being killed last night with friends of mine nearby, that everyone remember, your words do count. May their memory be a blessing, the two people who were killed last night. May all of the soldiers who have perished in any war, anywhere, may their memories be a blessing. But please, please know, I have fear, I'm sure everyone else does too. But words hurt, and words can threaten, and words can kill. So as you're talking about your issues, whatever issue you may be talking about in this county government, and I get passion, passion's fine, passion's good, passion's okay until it crosses a line. And when that passion crosses a line and inspires a hate and killing, that's just something that I don't think this county stands for. So I'm asking everyone, especially with Memorial Day weekend, please, please remember those whose memories are a blessing. Please remember those who are not with us, including the two people who got killed last night in DC, and anyone else you know, who has perished in war anywhere in the world right now. That's it, thank you.
Kenny, can I ask you a question, since you're there? We got this update on the Courthouse Park.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had asked the other day, is the Executive going to name a committee? Or should the Board pass a resolution to, to name a committee?
We're going to create, uh, we're going to have a meeting group right after.
Okay, can we just let that, the community know that?
Yeah, including the community members.
Bill, I promise this question I'll follow up, yeah.
Okay, Madam Clerk, first.
This is the time for persons who submitted a timely written request to address the Board on any matter of public interest. Please remember to limit your comments to three minutes, and we have 18 speakers.
Go ahead, first.
Uh, the first one is Leroy Truth.
Not here. Just say the, the, let him in or something.
The next one is Raymond Mitchell.
I just want to say that's me.
Ed. Block, block, block.
Where's Leroy today?
Uh, first off, is everybody's mic on? Because last week, I mean, two weeks ago, somebody interrupted me. I would like to know who was the person that intentionally interrupted me during, uh, last week's meeting? And this guy over here runs the prosecutor, disgraceful guy. Didn't you tell him to speak to me after?
He spoke.
He did not speak to me. And we couldn't even hear him on the microphone.
Speak, your thing.
All right? So it's, we want to pray for, where? DC? How about my father in the pandemic here? March 30th of 2020? Nothing. I'm asking to shut down Hackensack Meridian in the North Bergen Harbor Ridge, where my father was. I'm asking all of yous on the county, since you all are county public servants. So I'm asking you to protest with me in front of there a couple of days. You tell me the day that you could all be available, since we all want to play the protesting game. Because I've been here since March 30th of 2020 dealing with this stuff. And my family been hurt and harmed as well. My brother's children and everything, and Bergen County courts and everything. Everybody's playing a game with Brian Stack, seems like. How many people are teammate with Brian Stack right now, out of all of yous? I know Fanny is, but everybody else? That I got to come here and share this photo of my dad strangled here? It's a disgrace that I got to come every week and week, and this guy prosecutor runs off. Oh, cover your mouth there, talk, get up and talk, what, what do you know? Come on! What do you know? Don't laugh, what do you know?
Mr. Mitchell, tone of voice.
No, because I'm sick of that, I got to keep coming here, it's bullshit. Every single day. Tired of it, Romano, and you know better. How many weeks I've been here, everybody? Come on. Same shit. Where's the prosecutor's office? Esther Swires, what is she doing, nothing? Nobody cares, but she wants to come and say Washington DC, great guys. What are you to great guy? Secretary, what, you said great guy, right? Ma'am, I'm talking to you with the.
Mr. Mitchell, she's the Chief of Staff.
Oh, Chief of Staff, great guy, yeah. Always coming out with others, other people and other places, but here, Mike, on this all, I don't get any service. It's a shame that I have to keep coming here, back to back, watching my back, being set up.
We're sorry for your loss.
Well, it takes five weeks for Romano to say that? Nobody else says it, right? Nobody gives a shit, come on.
I'm definitely sorry.
And, and, and how many people knew about?
Time has expired, Cameron.
And how many people knew about the pandemic? So are you guys going to protest?
The next speaker is Tatiana Reed. Is Tatiana Reed here?
Next speaker.
Next one is Kayla Garcia. Is Kayla here?
Excellent.
Agn- Agnes Lucia.
And this guy, he's off the ca, I don't even want him near him. He should be arrested for excessive, mm, scumbag.
No.
Oh!
No handout.
Please, we don't tolerate that kind of language in chambers.
Coming here every fucking day, dealing with those children. People come from other places, worried about other shit.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you Commissioners for your time. My name is Agnes Lucila, I'm a worker at Hudson County Welfare. There are two reasons why I would like to talk to you today. First, we've been discussing the retention bonus and hazard pay. Till now, we still have not received it. So what we want to know is, when are we going to receive this? Uh, the second thing is the salary increase. Right now, the union is, um, in negotiations with management. And, uh, it was mentioned on the proposed budget, an increase of 5%. And in the last union meeting, they said we would be getting an offer of a market rate. I'm here to discuss what that market rate is. I think you have the handouts. Uh, the closest county to compare with Hudson County is Middlesex County. If you look through the first handout, you would see why. The rent is closest. A good indicator of cost of living is rent since other indicators like food, transportation, energy is almost the same. So in Middlesex County, it's only a dollar difference, if you see. Uh, now we look for the highest salary for a county welfare title in the same rank which is highlighted. I'm sorry, I don't have handouts for everyone. Uh, you'll see that the title is HSS 3 bilingual, and the set, the salary is $62,726. That is on one of the handouts there. The same title in Middlesex County earns an average of $77,605. That means a difference of 23%. Our market rate is 77,605. Anything less than that is not the market rate. That's why I'm here today, because I wanted to show you the difference between Hudson County and Middlesex County. So I hope you keep those handouts. And, um, what we have in the proposed budget is 5%. 5% is not enough. Thank you.
I have a question. Are there steps?
We don't have step. We don't have step, so that's why you took the average.
So, no, I understand. So in Middlesex, and do you know how many other counties, off the top of your head, have steps?
No, I don't, but I think it's a good idea to have step.
Yeah, so, so I, I would strongly suggest to the, to the Administration as part of the negotiations that you do create a step system.
Yes.
And the reason behind that is you're losing people. People are leaving here. Why are they leaving here? Because there are no steps. There's nothing to encourage you to stay six or seven years and, and see bumps. In this case, it looks like about a $4,000 bump a year in the title that, that, um, was spoken about. And then beyond that, every time a new contract comes up, I would assume, in most cases, that each of those steps will get bumped up by whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
Three, four, whatever the percentage, the percentages. The fact that we are desperately losing people, even have trouble for some titles attracting people to take the job, I, I want to go on record publicly to say that I am encouraging the Administration, as part of their negotiations, to incorporate steps into, into the salaries that are, that are covered under the, the Family Services, um, Division or Department. Because when you look at the other one, it doesn't matter. I could be here 10 years, I could be here two years, and the minimum's the minimum. And honestly, I got a problem when they call something a minimum, because then I don't know how people get more than the minimum. Is it based on who they know? Or is it based on how long they're here? Or is it based on, um, independent or, or, or objective job evaluations? I don't know. So I, I think that, um, I appreciate you today, and I think that I, I as one member, I let everyone else speak for themselves. I know we heard that everyone supports our law enforcement unions that are here, and that, that's a great thing. Um, but I for one think that steps should be incorporated into the negotiations and part of the settlement that occurs.
I agree.
Go keep that.
Thank you, Mr. O'Day.
Keep that in mind, Alfred, please, in negotiations, thank you. Next speaker.
Can I ask a question?
Albert Lyons.
But, go ahead.
Elroy Lyons.
But I, I, I can ask a question?
Go ahead, Al.
Um, the, uh,
The, Bill O'Day and the speaker just talked about, can we interject steps?
Just came on.
System into the contracts. But how do we do that? I mean, the speaker comes up here, and with all due respect to her, she comes up here in the middle of a contract negotiation that's taking place now. And I don't think it's fair to her or fair to us to negotiate that in public. She's represented by a union. The union is engaged with the county administration. And they're in the middle of negotiations. I don't think it's fair to us to interject ourselves into that negotiation. Actually, I think it may be illegal for us to do that. But, but, but how do we, how do we as a board? I guess we just have to go back to the administration and say, hey, look, when you're going forward with different contracts, should we have a step system or not? The fact that we're making comments about whether we should or not at this meeting, I think is I think it's ineffective. I mean, if we're going to have that discussion, we have to have it at a prior date. Right now, this young lady is speaking about the contract that's on the table now that's being negotiated. And as a board, we can't discuss that. That has to be between the collective bargaining agents for the union and the county. So I agree with Bill in that maybe a step system is the appropriate mode going forward. But right now, this young lady doesn't want that. She wants to know what's going to happen now in her contract. And I just think that her union ought to be at the table discussing that with our people at the table. We can't get involved in that right now. This comes up all the time. Union members, and they're very sincere, they come up to us and they're petitioning us because they think that the negotiation is not going well. Or we're not all bargaining good faith or whatever. But that's not our province. Our province is, we're the administration. We have a collective bargaining representative in the county. And she has a collective bargaining agent in her union. We, as a board, I don't think it's appropriate or legal for us to get involved in negotiating the specifics of the pending negotiations. So if I'm missing something, I'll let the county council tell me or let Bill O'Day tell me.
You're not. Go ahead.
I'll let the county council go first.
Go ahead. No, Madam Clark, go ahead. Continue. Continue with the next.
Commissioner, Commissioner Stefeli, earlier in the meeting, I asked for votes on the caucus meeting for April 22nd.
I agree. I came late to the meeting, but yes, I.
And also for the regular meeting on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker.
I just, I'm not going to yield the floor.
No, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that as an elected official, without getting into specifics of saying a contract should be X% more or a step should be X amount of dollars. I think at any point in time, up to and including while a contract is going through negotiations, I can publicly, privately express my thoughts or opinions on what I think would be good or bad within whatever that process is. The administration can not listen to what I have to say. They can heed, listen to what I have to say. I think that's their right, their right to do either. But I think that I come here with a lot of years of experience. And, you know, it's maybe not a bad idea to listen to it. And when an individual speaks at a meeting and raises a, what seems to me, a valid point, as I've been listening for years about the challenges in that area. We have other areas here today that may tell us other challenges. But in that particular area of how we're losing people because of not having a step system, I think I have an obligation to point out that while you are negotiating contract, considering that should be something that the administration should do. That's all I said.
And can I, can I, can I respond?
Al, let's not be laborious. Go ahead, Al.
Well, I'm not belaboring it, but that's what we're here for.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so I don't disagree with the substance of what Bill has said. What I do disagree with is labor law is, it's a trade-off. One of the trade-offs is the employer, whether it's the county of Hudson or General Motors. The trade-off is we, as an employer, recognize the union. And the union is the negotiating party for the employees. We, I believe, have an obligation to respect that. And our negotiations cannot circumvent that. And when we, as a board, discuss in public employees grievances or positions outside of their union representatives, and we directly discuss that with them. I don't know, but maybe that's a violation of the labor laws. And I'm not saying you're, Bill, I'm not saying that what the young lady said is wrong. I'm not saying what you said is wrong about whether or not a step system is a is a more beneficial approach to contracts. All I'm saying is, I don't know that we're permitted as a board to publicly interject ourselves in that negotiation. That's why we have unions, and that's why we have collective bargaining. And for, and I realize, we as representatives of our constituents, and some of them, many of them are our employees, I get it. But I don't know that this is the forum we need to negotiate. We shouldn't be negotiating in public on this. We've delegated that authority because of the labor laws to the collective bargaining agent for the union, this young lady, and that's her union. And our representatives. So I'm not, please, I'm not trying to throw a hand grenade into your your, the wisdom that you have as far as whether it's right or wrong. I'm only saying it's procedurally, I don't think it's a minefield. I don't think we should be getting involved in that in public. So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Al.
If at the end of the day, I have to err on the side of overstepping my bounds?
You will. I get it, Bill.
Into saying what I think is right when it comes to people that work for the county, whether they're public safety.
Yeah, that won't be the first time.
Yeah, I'll err on the side of overstepping.
I understand.
I don't mind, I don't mind if I get sued as a result of it. And, you know, if the sheriff officers have to take me away, like they had to take poor mayor Nork.
Hey, Bill.
Because I do that. Just give me, just give me one phone call.
Al Rico made a note of it. Move on. Next speaker.
Delroy Lyons. Delroy?
Next speaker.
Benny Lozogio.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, Ben.
Good evening, Deputy Director, Mr. Morel. So I'm gonna be brief. We've made some traction in the last week or so, so I'm happy to say that part. I told you that the next meeting was bringing some of my guys and some of my supervisor union there as well. There is some still issues, and I believe now that they're going to be worked out. Some of them already are taking a positive direction. And, you know, what I want to say is that I bring this today. So we did do some hiring over the last three years, 110 guys. Thirty of them have left already from the 110, alright? So all I can say to you is that I hope that, you know, the new direction that we're heading is going to be good for us, for the supervisor union, for our union. Like I said, right now, currently, I hope and pray that maybe we can sit down and have a conversation about our contract. Maybe possibly being reopened because there's some things that need to be fixed. A lot of departments are settling their contracts now, and we're falling way behind. Like I said, so how do you retain money? Quality of life? So, you know, like I said, at the end of the day, I want to say thank you again to Commissioner Craig Guy. I mean, County Executive Craig Guy, to the commissioners. I want to say thank you to Ed Nestor and Shandamorel because I said, I think we're going to be headed in the right direction. But again, there is some issues. And again, like I said, I would like to possibly revisit reopening our contract as we're falling behind, and a lot of other corrections departments are blowing, like in the years of it takes us to get to step one, the step to our max is high. So again, like I said, I just want to say thank you for hearing me out. There's one or two more of my members that want to speak. They want to, and I encourage that so you can hear from somebody else besides myself. And again, I just said, thank you, and I hope that this new thing that's taking place, that's going to work out for us. And we're going to be in a better space. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ben.
The next speaker is DK Moore. DK Moore.
Good afternoon. My name is Devon Murphy.
Hold on. Who's TK Moore?
That's Mr. Moore.
Oh, okay. I thought you said Devon Mur.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 okay. Glad stuff.
So the copies I'm handing y'all is basically the information I provided to the Hudson County Corrections Office, well, the Corrections Office concerning my employment with them. So basically, I'm speaking to y'all today because I'm still being denied the opportunity to become a correction officer. And the three things that's listed on there is part of the reason why. But I want to know why is this stopping me from getting employed? And since then, since I handed them that information, I haven't heard anything back from them regarding anything. And that's pretty much it. I just want to know, why is this stopping me from being employed? When I clearly have nothing against me, you know, like I have no record on anything, and I'm still being denied till this day. I want information on what's going on, why I'm being denied, and what is the outcome of this? What can we do to better this situation?
So could somebody be helpful? Like, here's an individual who I don't think will leave here when he's a correction officer. He won't be one of the 30 of 110. And he's obviously passionate about this. He's been here more than one time. And if it's, if somebody says someone in the state said you couldn't do this, then let us, let me, and I would think most of, if not all, my colleagues know, and let us petition whoever that individual in the state may be. If it's the State Department Corrections, if it's Governor Murphy, whoever it is, right? Like, give us something that we can then take and say, this is the reason why this gentleman's application isn't being processed. This is why who, and he went through all these steps, and then this suddenly came up that I remember from the last. Who has the power, authority?
They call you back.
Who has the power or authority to give him, whether he has to start it over from the process or can pick up where it's left off? We may be successful or not successful, but we need to know exactly who that is. Because there's nothing I think that and whatever it is, we need to know. Because I don't know what it is. I see what this is, and I don't know, it kind of, if this, if these are the, if these are the issues of stuff, and this was what was backed up in here, like, tell us what we need to do, right? I just, I just, we can't get people to be correction officers. We go out trying to recruit officers, and we recruit 30 and wind up with 10. Here's somebody coming here pleading to have an opportunity. And he's from our city, right? And he's somebody from our city. He's not someone from far away looking to come here. He's like, he's, and he'll stay here. Tell us, who is it? What has to be done? What has to be changed? We just can't sit quietly and go, thank you, next speaker. I mean, it's just not what we're elected to do.
One last thing, would you or Mr. Walker be able to help me with this situation?
I want to know what I have to do. I'm sure we both will. We just need to know, what do we have to do? Is it, is it, do we have the county authority to do it? Then tell us, yes. If not, who is it? Is it the state? Who is it in the state? What has to be done? Nobody tells us except something nebulous that says, if you don't, if you do this, or you didn't write that, you can't do it. Alright, what's the rule that says that? And who made that rule? And how does an ability an individual have to appeal that and say, I didn't understand that? Or I misinterpreted that? And because something happened when I was 16, I didn't realize. I thought when I'm 18, because if I were you, I would thought the same thing. I always learn when I'm 18, then that's gone. That automatically goes away from me. That, well, but again, I would be in the same situation DK is because I would have always, because that's how I always learned it from as long as I went. But whatever it is, show us in detail, not just, and I'm not, and I'm not picking on you, Ed, or even pointing you, but all we were told is something vague, like, you know, the rule changed, and if you do this, then that's it, you're done. Alright, show me what the rule is. Show me who the person is that administers that rule. Let us write a letter. Let us call. Let us, I mean, I know the heads, the folks from the union are sympathetic to your cause. Like, let's, let's just try.
Mr. Chairman.
Ed was going to answer my question for us now.
Alright.
Alright. Commissioner O'Day, just to take things in perspective, I've been involved a lot with recruiting and trying the retention of these individuals. However, as the police training commission, now a police license, there's a whole extra level of oversight. And it's things we can't do. They'll just take, I'll give you an example. I had a guy that was arrested 15 years ago. He came to me. I mean, he was arrested several times, but 15 years ago was the last one. So I thought that was good enough. And the PTC said, no, he was out. And kind of wasted all of our time and brought him to the end where I had him recruited, and they took him out. That's on them. We can't get a license. If you have no license, you can't be employed in law enforcement, state of New Jersey. That's just the way it is.
So, but, but, but again, you're giving me a you're giving me a glimmer of it. What I want to need to know at the end of the day is, who is that commission? Who's the person that runs the commission? Are there multiple commissioners, right? Or is it a commission? Who's that person? Who do we, who are we able to write a letter to on his behalf that says, hey, you know him, we've met him, he spoke at our meeting? And they may come back and say, you have to change this rule. Okay, how do I change the rule? Does the legislature change the rule? Or is it a regulatory rule? Again, if it's a regulatory rule, fine, then who do I go to? I can go to governor's council. There's a whole avenue to go. Right now, I don't know, except to say, it ain't us, it's them, there's nothing we can do about it. That, that isn't an acceptable.
I'm not saying it's not.
Can I, can I?
I'll look into, what I'll tell you I will do, I'll personally look into his whole background and his whole situation. And then I'll come with you with the detailed reason why he can or cannot continue.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on one second, Al.
Whether the PTC says yes or no, I will give you my recommendation, then I will give you their answer, and then we can go from there.
And if there's, and if there, this is a hurdle, is there a way to overcome that hurdle, that we, as a board? Us with a lawyer, I'm going to wait for Ed. I'm going to defer to Ed. And what can be done to try to rectify it for his situation? But there may be 10 other people just like him. I just, I want to understand it.
Yeah, I just think the PTC and this whole license came about because they want a specific. Yeah, I just think the PTC and this whole license came about because they want a specific people in law enforcement.
They can't get people. And it's getting worse. All right, let's meet with them. Well, let's sit down and have a meeting with them. Jesus. Be realistic about it. I was in a diner yesterday and, and, and someone who's a waitress there said, yeah, my son's going in the, is going in the army uh, in January. I said, wait, he, he just, he's been in Essex as a correction officer. Said, yeah, no, he's gonna go in the army. He went through everything. He went through the academy. He's in Essex County. He's gonna go into the army. I said, you know, God knows what's going on in DC and in the world. He may, he may be worse off in, in, in the, wherever he gets sent than he is there. And she said, he don't think so. So seriously, like, there's a problem. And they need to change.
Al, go ahead, Al.
Just, just quietly, I think, I think this all resolves, revolves around one question, which we hear very, very often these days, due process. I think a, an applicant has a right to know why he's being rejected, if he's being rejected. If it's a matter of expunging his records, we can help him with that. That's easy now. That used to be a pain in the behind. Now it's pretty easy. If that's his problem, tell us. Somebody tell us what this young man's problem is. Because I agree with Bill, we have a shortage of CEOs, other law enforcement officers. And, and we shouldn't be standing in their way because of technical issues. Just tell us what the issues are and maybe we can fer through them and, and
Exactly.
Exact, right Bill? I mean, and, and if it's a matter of, of a simple expungement, tell them, call me, I'll take care of it. It's not that difficult. But, but, but give the, give this young man due process.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, and then look, I, and then I should say, I appreciate you. I know you, we grew up in the same neighborhood. I, I'm glad that, that Benny spoke, uh, 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 if they, if they leave resolving their issues in your hands, I, I, I'm happy. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get every, everything resolved. You're, you're, you're a JC guy, you're the real deal. And when you tell me something, I trust what you say, what, what you tell me. But I trust you're gonna tell me, this is what it is. There's an easy out to it. There's a hard out to it. We gotta, we gotta get an act of Congress done, whatever it is, but at least we have a chance to know what we need to do.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Sharonda.
The next speaker I've listed is Courtney Walker.
Good evening, County Commissioners. Um, my name is Courtney Walker and I'm a resident of Jersey City. I'm here tonight to express serious concern about a mailing that was sent out by our county clerk just over a month ago. In that mailing, I was told, quote, "Your voter record indicates that you were on the list to receive vote by mail ballots for all elections since 2020 or earlier and that you have not cast your ballot in any of the four consecutive years, beginning with the 2020 general election. As a result, you will be removed from the list to receive vote by mail ballots automatically and will no longer be sent mail-in ballots for future elections. This statement is incorrect. I have voted in every election year since moving to New Jersey in 2018 and I've voted by mail several times since registering for vote by mail in 2020. After contacting the county clerk's office, I learned I wasn't the only person affected. Their solution was to send out a correction letter. However, that correction letter was only sent to a portion of the people who received the original mailing and confusingly, it was also sent to some people who were never on the original list. Through a couple of Oprah requests, I found the following. Over ninety thousand people received the incorrect mailing. Only twenty-five thousand people received the correction letter. Of those, only eleven thousand actually lived in Jersey City, which was the only city which got the incorrect mailer. So I'm here tonight to ask, what is the county doing to follow up with the clerk's office to make sure the situation has been fully remediated and proper checks and controls are in place so this never happens again? At a time when our democracy is fragile and public trust in government is already low, we must do everything we can to ensure people receive accurate information, especially when it comes to voting. Hudson County already has the lowest voter turnout in all of New Jersey for the past twenty years in a row in state gubernatorial elections. That makes this mailing even more troubling as it risks further suppressing an already low voter participation rate. So I respectfully ask the board, what has been done to address the situation? How has it been, has it been fully resolved? What steps are we taking to ensure it doesn't happen again? And finally, what are we doing proactively as a county to increase our voter turnout? Thank you.
Very well said, and we're gonna get your answers. Um, anybody on from the Board of Elections, Al Borrico? And the clerk, the clerk, our county clerk's office, nobody?
I don't see anybody on
Alright, let's get it, get somebody, get him on the phone and then we'll get back to you, okay, so they can have
Can we get your contact information?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Let me know.
You just give someone your
Yeah, no, I won't. Smart, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Give it to the, to the attorney.
Thank you.
Al Borrico, somebody on there, please.
The next, the next speaker is Tawana Mayer.
Okay.
Since she's not here, Yehara Garcia.
And make a note, please, Al Borrico, future meetings, we'd like to have a representative from the clerk's office and from the Board of Elections listening in on our meetings, Zoom or in, in-house.
Absolutely.
Yeah, look, everyone, is, is the college have somebody here today? The schools of technology have somebody here today.
I think the school's
But like, everybody should have a person available, because we don't know what
If the public
issue or question may come up at the public portion of the meeting.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Yehara Garcia and I work over at the Wallfield Building for the County, uh, Hudson County. I am here today to request an update on an ongoing unresolved matter regarding our hazard pay. My coworkers and I have been protesting on county grounds for over a month now. We have attended numerous meetings on this issue, yet we still have no resolution. We continue to leave with no answers, only vague promises and no meaning in action. We have heard nothing but words in the air with no clear timeline for when we will receive our hazard pay that was wrongfully withheld from us despite two other unions already receiving the same funds. As elected commissioners, you are entrusted with a board range of legislative, administrative and financial responsibilities. You are, you are tasked with evaluating and operating the county's annual budget. Given that level of oversight, it should not be difficult for this board to provide a clear and transparent account on how these pandemic-related hazard funds were managed. This board has a duty to the citizens you represent. It is not your responsibility, is it not your responsibility to oversee and follow up on public concerns? Especially those involving federal funds designated for specifically to essential workers. So I asked the board today directly, where, where were these funds allocated? This is a question that's been asked for the past month or so. Was the allocation properly documented? If so, can the documentation be made available to us the public? When would the individuals for whom these funds were intended for finally be received? If any agreement regarding this issue had been made, what is the status of those agreements? And can you provide us with actual factual documentation today, given the longevity of this unresolved matter? These funds were granted to support essential workers, those who continue to serve their community during the public health crisis. Yet, to see, to this day, we have not received what was promised and rightfully ours. We are not making unreasonable demands. We are simply asking for what it's, for what we have earned. As commissioners, you are responsible and insured that the county department and agencies operate both efficiently and fairly. The, this includes the ethical and timely distribution of federal fund, federal relief funds. We ask that you fulfill the duties of your office and give the matter, this matter, the serious attention it requires. Our voices will not be silenced. And our questions will not continue to go unanswered. We are simply demanding what is owed to us. We respectfully request this board to provide us clear documentation responses and when we can expect to have these funds distributed to us, the workers. Mr. Romano, it is very heartbreaking to me that I have worked with you side by side in many health fairs to see how quickly you dismiss me and my coworkers up here when we speak about this matter. I have sat here week after week and allowed you to quickly, next, next speaker, next speaker, okay, they're not there, they can't speak. I was denied to speak the, the last meeting I was here because I sent my request in at five o'clock. I was denied to speak that day. That was two weeks ago, but I sat here very quietly and I listened.
Change the rule so that you can, number one. Number two, we're not dismissing, we were told by legal counsel, there's certain things that we cannot answer. Al Borrico, you want to explain, please?
So, Chairman, the, the answer, and I understand the, the, the concern of, of the speaker. I don't, because I'm bound by also the rules of professional conduct, I don't want to undermine the representation, the legal representation of the union, because there's an attorney-client relationship there that I cannot ethically abuse. And therefore, these, the leadership and the attorneys for the union do have the answers because we are in the middle of litigation. And therefore, those answers could also be provided by the representation. We are in the middle of litigation. There are dates coming up for the next steps in this. So that, that's basically the answer, but I, I, they are entitled to getting those answers from their representation, because I cannot violate that attorney-client privilege.
Good question. So now, if the representation is not providing me answers, the county is not providing me answers, I come to you guys to provide me answers. Nobody's providing the answers. The answers are being, they're being asked, they're not being answered.
Later after this, I'd like to be, the leaders, one of the leaders' numbers to find out, could you find out where they're not, why they're not providing them with that information? That would come from you.
I, I can have a conversation with counsel. I, I can instruct them what to do, but they should be listening to
From their own membership.
They should be listening to their clients, absolutely.
And in conclusion, the meeting from April four, twenty-fourth that I was here, and Mr. Copes had mentioned that day that the board was gonna have an executive meeting with the county and that when I came back to this podium, you guys will have an answer for me. What answer does the board have for me today, according to what Mr. Copax said, April twenty-fourth?
I wanted personally an update and we did get an update. We just
You didn't get an update?
We did. And, uh, you know, we had good conversation. We just can't share that information. I know that's a hard answer for you. Believe me, it'd be a lot easier if I gave you the answer or you could sit in and, and hear what we say behind closed doors, uh, where we're allowed to, uh, with our attorney present, but we just can't share that information.
Okay, so everything that I hear is, I come here, so everything's confidential. What is, what is, what, where's the transparency here for the public? What is it that the board can provide to us for as information? Because every time I come here, it's always said, this is private, this is private, this is, what transparency is there for us?
The council's explaining, it's, we're bound by legal
So your union president or attorney, whoever your representation, has to give you that information. We can't give you that information.
And if they don't provide it to us, where, where do I go next? If the union and the, and the county doesn't provide it, where do I go next?
I would go above his head to the next union leadership. You're asking me, right? You have Bill Morowski, I worked with him, uh, for ASME contracts and issues in Bayonne, the guy's a gentleman. His name's Bill Morowski, I know he's still with ASME, he's leadership. So, if you're not getting the answers from your leadership on, on your level, you gotta go a step higher to get them.
Okay, and then my final question, Mr. Low Day. In regards to the hazard pay, the question has been over and over and over, has the board evaluated as to where the funds have been allocated to? That should be public information. Has the board verified as to where that pandemic money was allocated to, since it was not given to us, the workers? What did we do with this money?
So, Mr. Administrator, you, you can, should and publicly be able to disclose where every dollar of the ARC money to date has been allocated, as well as whatever dollars remain that may have yet to be allocated. That's not a difficult document to put together, correct?
No, that, that's been disclosed in a website and that, that question that was raised by the employee that was directed to Director Fuller and she responded to the, to the union leadership on those questions. So those questions
But again, but again,
What website?
For that question, for that question, Director Fuller can respond to the union leadership, but equally can respond directly to glass, because she did not come ask that question necessarily on behalf of the union. She came in here as an employee, member of the public, and asked a question that is clearly the purview of public information. So have Director Fuller take her number, contact her directly.
He's here today?
Is, Shell's here? So
Can I, can I ask, can I ask a question?
Al, could just give me two seconds for this? And get her whatever information and, and provide her that. The other, the other issue is, we did meet in closed session. Kenny's correct, we can't discuss in, in detail what, 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 what we discussed. However, there was direction given from the board almost unanimously. And it's your obligation, County Council, through whatever ongoing closed sessions may be necessary to update us on that because that you can and should do.
You're absolutely right, and we haven't had an update since because the next date is coming up in a few weeks.
So since that For what?
The next, the next hearing or there's a panel scheduled with counsel for the union. We have our next appearance, which is actually our first actual appearance before the commission. So since we have had that meeting, we haven't had any updates because there hasn't been anything happening yet.
What exact date is that?
It is, uh, May twenty-ninth. We have our first
So it's next week?
It's just a conference call. And, and the, it's the initial conference call on this matter that has been filed by the union, so it is an ongoing litigation. So there has been no update since we met.
Okay, but, so you'll have a conference call next week. You were given direction from the board. Will you, like, no one's told us whether you're, and it's not your decision, how you are taking that direction or not taking that direction as part of that process. And I think that's a fundamental question that I don't want to find out three months and three hearings later. We, oh, I'm sorry, guys, we just ignored your direction because we're not obligated to take any direction from you. And here's where we are. So I think, Mr. Administrator, maybe this is better directed at you than County Council. Then, I'm not asking you to do it right now, but if you need to go in a closed session at the next meeting, next caucus, fine. You were given pretty clear direction. I was there, right? There's a transcript of it, though it's not public. And I want to know what you're doing with the direction that was given to you.
Okay. Thank you. Al, you had a comment?
Yeah, just, just one comment, and I, and I don't, I don't want to be, uh, I, I don't want to abuse the speaker, uh, and the sincerity for questions with any bureaucratic, uh, what's a legal expression? Bovine excrement? I think we don't know what that means. But, just to clarify something, because this gets stated over and over again, and I think it gives the public the wrong impression or misinformation. When we got the, uh, federal money there were, there were funds that, there were categories of things that we could spend that money on. One of those categories was for, I guess to use the expression, hazard duty pay. However, that was not a mandate. That was, so when the speaker says, or others, not just this speaker, but the impression that other speakers have given is that somehow we as a board or we as a county have, have misappropriated their money or have, um, somehow, um, violated the federal law and, and how that money's spent? That's, that is misinformation. That's not correct. And my understanding is that we were giving a certain buckets of money. If that's the word, buckets, that's another, another nonsense word that they use now. We were given buckets of money. Some of those, those monies could be spent for giving employees hazardous pay. We got that. And we, we have, and we have, and that's where we are with PERC now, right now. We have done that and we are now in a dispute with PERC and that's a pending PERC matter. And that's why the union has And that's why the union has their attorneys, we have our attorneys, and we as a board can't get into those weeds right now. That's got to work out. But, but my comment is that the impression that the speaker gives, and not just this speaker, but other speakers have given, is that somehow we as a board or we as a county have committed, committed something illegal. We've misappropriated monies that were theirs. That's not true. And, and that money was made available to us and we could allocate it for them. And that's where we are right now. But, but please, don't, don't give the public the idea that Hudson County or this board got money that was specifically earmarked for these folks and we're not giving them their money. That's incorrect.
Okay, so these bucks were given to certain, certain individuals, but not all individuals?
Excuse me?
No.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Everyone wasn't social workers. Workers received it. Everyone didn't receive it. It's Mark here.
Go ahead, next speaker.
If not, Jerry Benella.
Oh, Mr. Ramon, you see, you're next speaker.
Well, we have to do that. It's time. We can't have a dialogue.
If we're here till 10 o'clock at night, you, you voted to sit there, listen to us till 10 o'clock at night. It doesn't matter. You voted to, we.
After the meeting, I'll sit with you.
You to sit there to hear us out. Give us that receipt to hear us out.
I will.
At 8, 10 o'clock at night.
After the meeting, I'll sit with you as long as you want.
I mean, have your meeting, Mr. Ramon.
Jerry Benelia.
Prior to the next speaker, I'm formally requesting, and I don't need to have each of the employees' names, but I want to know from not only, I want this union as well as the other unions where there were agreements done, the list of every employee that was not granted the retention pay, because that's the terminology we've used, the retention pay as of yet date, and the reasoning why. Well, we've never got it. I, I, that's why I was asking you questions that I always ask. Why was, maybe there was information that, that other people got. And I don't, and I don't, the detail of it I want, and again, number, employees by number, not by name. I don't want to violate anything. If your contention is the last date from X period to Y period, that employee, 17, worked was blank date, then give me that level of specificity. And I know with other unions, your, your, your reasoning is going to be that employee is no longer an employee of the county. Because we've had, right, Jerry, people that came to us.
Right.
And I know there's another category that's going to be employee 38, who was a, and I'm using 1199 because it's, their situation's not as severe and who didn't get their money. Employee 38, who was with 1199J then, is now a management employer, in management or is now in a different union, a supervisor's union. That's the level of detail that I want. And quite frankly, you should be able to turn that around in a day because in order to give out the retention pay to everybody else, you had to make that determination for everybody you didn't give it to.
We did request that the last, yeah, we did request that.
We, we, we did provide, we did not, we, we did provide, we just didn't give you that level of detail, Commissioner. But, but we did provide the number of employees by union that did not receive it. We did provide that information, but not, but not, but not, but not to that level of detail.
Why?
What was that?
There were no reasons why they weren't, just the fact that this number, 400, didn't get it.
Again, the majority of the reasons why they were, there are exceptions is because they did not work during the timeframe that we stated.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Hit that gap.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. I'm answering why they didn't.
Right, and, and.
That's the, I'm only answering a question.
Right, and, all right. No, and, and Abe, Abe, that's why I asked you a specific as to what was the last date they worked. And in that, in the instance of this union, I want to know the last date they worked from not March 21, but from whatever, March 1st or earlier on.
Okay.
Right, because there's a dispute over the date.
You, you, you want it focused in the month of March, from March 1st to March 20.
Right, right, because, no, no one disagrees, no one disagrees that if a person didn't work from February 20th on, they are entitled to it because March 1 is the date, right? So yes, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
Go ahead, Mr. Speaker, next speaker. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Viganomani. I worked in corrections for 16 years. So far, I've worked at Hudson for four years. Previously, I worked at Union County for 12. And I can say that mandatory overtime has become a daily reality at the jail. We're being forced to stay past our shifts a little to no notice. And while staffing is clearly an issue, it isn't a solution. It's just creating more problems. Before we had mandatory overtime, this jail was staffed better than it is now. Also, guys are working 16 hours without a break at times. I have an 11-year-old son with special needs and a five-year-old daughter who has just diagnosed with type 1 diabetes. She depends on me to manage her insulin, attend frequent medical appointments and respond to emergencies. Yet I've been told I cannot refuse mandatory even if it means missing my daughter's hospital visits or my son's care. What's even more frustrating is that being forced to use my FMLA not for flexibility, not for a time to heal, but just to survive mandatory overtime that is directly interferes, interferes with my children's medical needs. That is not what FMLA is designed for. And I want to be clear, I do my part. I volunteer for scheduled overtime when I can. I understand that staffing issues, I've always done what's asked of me, but what's happening now is not sustainable. It's not fair to the officers and it's not fair to our families. We're human beings, we're parents, we're caregivers, and we deserve policies that reflect that. I'm not asking for a handout. I'm asking for a system that recognizes that families come first, always. Also, I want to mention that President Wisojo forgot that he handed in this survey last meeting about the 12 hours and 73% of our members are not happy with 12-hour shifts. And suggestion would be put everybody back on eight-hour shifts, give them partial weekends so that the jail staff during the week. And on the weekends, we could figure out how to staff it then. Like, it's not as bad on the weekends. Pretty much all I have right now.
Ask you a question, sir?
Yes.
With regards to the hours, I, I personally agree with you. I think 12 hours is a lot. Did you contractually negotiate that?
I, yes, we did.
Through your union?
I believe so.
Well, why would, why, I mean, have you talked to your union reps to find out if it can be, if that could be revisited?
I believe they're trying right now.
I think that, I think that was said earlier. Can you reopen?
Yeah.
And that's probably one of the main reasons because 12 is 16. That's reality. Eight was 12, 12 is 16. And I think that some people believe that 12 would be 12, but 12's become 16. And that's where, and in their, in their lives, much of what the problem is. But 12 became 16, almost automatic.
I would never, when I was a union member, never would have went for that. I suggest that you have a discussion with. West, indeed.
All right.
He'll give you some ideas there. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Look, you have to have trust in the person who's presenting the question.
And by the way, I don't know how the sheriff's offices do it either. I would never support the Pittman.
Next speaker, Jerry Benia.
Jerry? He's not here.
Esther Winter.
Just in time. Good evening. I have a comment and a question. Firstly, let me start with my comment. I would like the commissioners to reconsider the time of your meetings. 4:30 is very difficult for people like myself who work to get here after work plus commuting. You're voted in by the public and I think you should give the public a fair opportunity to be able to come and participate in these meetings or at the very least have the, the ability to do it by Zoom. That being said, my question to the freeholders is I'm curious to know what is going on with the school that's supposed to be built in the Liberty Science Center area in Jersey City? Is that going forward? Is that on hold or has that been canceled?
Abe?
It's being built.
Who do we have from either the Improvement Authority?
No, the schools.
And all the schools of technology. Well, they're both part of it. The Improvement Authority, I think, is the.
There's no one else from the schools of technology?
There, there is. It's Alicia Abraham, but I don't know if she knows any, anything about this.
For the record.
But Abe knows.
Yeah, but for the record, Alicia has just been appointed to the position. Alicia, can you please just come on board and we'll get Esther's information to you? Can you give us an update? Or if you don't, can you get it as soon as possible for the speaker?
No, but I'm sure Abe Anton has information he can provide us. He's the county administrator.
Commissioner, I, I have not been in touch with that situation in a long time. So I don't have anything recent on that. They came to us, I think, over a year and a half, two years ago, with a budget that was not sustainable and I don't know what happened after that. I don't know the status.
I'm here.
Alicia, could you?
Yes, I'm here. I don't have any information either, but I can certainly bring this back to administration.
Okay, and also to give your information to the clerk for the speaker to get your number, please, your office number?
Sure.
I think.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have been informed that.
Esther, Jerry, Jerry?
I think what she was, what she was asking for was, was the construction being done right now, currently?
Not so much if the construction is being done, if the project is going forward. The bottom line is I want to know if the school is going up there or not.
Ed, you said?
It's not because of the school. It's because I'm more interested in the project going on in Jersey City. So I'd like to know, because that was supposed to be part of the deal, that a school was going up and the county was supposed to build a school, but I haven't heard anything more about that and I was wondering if that was still on the table.
Yes, Ed.
I've been informed that County Clerk Maldonado is on the call live right now.
Okay, well, hold on, we have to.
Let's address this issue first.
Esther, we're going to get, Alicia is going to call in right now. Ed, can you get Esther's info to give it? Okay, Esther?
Did it come up?
Yes.
But, but, so just so everyone understands, an underlying reasoning behind everything that has occurred on that site, which includes the transfer of the property from the city of Jersey City to Liberty Science Center, was based upon the agreement that a STEM school would be built there, a STEM high school would be built there. If in fact the school is not going to be built there, then the, one would argue the entire agreement is called into question. And if there was never an intention to build a school there, then the potential of fraud on someone's part is called into question. So if, if the fact that that school is not moving forward, add that to the list of items that you only tell us when someone else lets us know, because that list is seemingly piling up because no one's ever told us in those two years. I don't know what's going on, if that school's going to happen or not. But the last thing I remember is voting on something because I voted on it, Mr. Administrator, with the note that Jersey City wasn't going to pay $2 million a year. And you said, I understand that. So when was that voted on?
Alicia, could you please provide as soon as possible to all the commissioners?
We had a vote, we had a vote on an item.
Yes, I will.
Item.
I have my phone number in the chat as well.
That item referenced, referenced that the city of Jersey City was on the hook and you and I talked recently for the amount, 2 million.
Yeah, I remember all that.
But when was that?
Your last statement.
When did we vote on that particular item or agreement?
Oh, so it was several years ago.
Let's, let's, so since then, no one has ever come to us and said, by the way, the numbers don't, we don't think this works, we don't like. Those conversations have never occurred and I think sooner or more recent than the item we voted on, there's been other items voted on, on the municipal side related to it. So I mean.
Commissioner, as I said, I have not been in the loop after that, after that meeting. I have not been involved in those discussions. I, what I, and I think I said this to you, they, we had a meeting with Jersey City several, a couple of years ago and they, with Liberty Science Center, and they came to us with a number that was not sustainable. And what was said to them is you need to go and get more money. And that was the last participation that I had and I believe I conveyed that to you.
Yeah, but that was then, but nobody came to us and said, they haven't got more money. I talked to Nick.
Well, after that, I haven't had any further discussions.
Then we need Nick Fargo to be on the next caucus and meeting because Nick is a point person.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Okay, you first, Al, then go ahead.
This, to the administrator, I just want to know, to be honest, you know, this, this, is something being built there right now? And it's, it's luxury condominiums. It's not, it's not the school and I, and I think, I think the school should have came first before the luxury condo. I, I don't, I don't know the, the structure of the deal, but I, I, I see that these big luxury condos is being built right now. So my question is, you know, what's the, what's the schedule? Like, what, do it, was the school first or the condo? Like, how, how did that, you know, how, how was that structured?
Yeah, if we can, Abe, get us, get us a copy of the agreement to all the commissioners.
Again, it, it was an agreement that was entered into several years ago. I don't think it makes any reference to, I think commissioner, they say is accurate, that it was supposed to be subdivided and, and, and what's happening in those other subdivisions have nothing to do with the school.
Alicia, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Al, go ahead, Al.
Real, real quickly, and, and the answer probably will not come now, but when, when Abe looks at it, maybe I'm, my memory is failing about, did, did, did the county own part of this property, have title to this property?
No, no, no. The city had it, the city transferred title to Liberty Science.
All right, so, so why, why are we involved? Only because of the funding through the Improvement Authority?
We committed to do a school.
All right, all right.
You committed to do a school based on certain conditions.
All, all right, all right, all right.
Well, well, one condition which we all admitted is illegal. And that commit, commit, condition was that in exchange for $2 million a year, the city of Jersey City would get X number of seats. And we've clearly stated that legally you cannot do that, that the funding sources from the state government towards building the school will never allow it, which is why the city of Jersey City will never pay $2 million a year for the bonds.
I don't think that's enforceable.
Yeah, but, but, but Commissioner, if you recall, that wasn't one of the conditions because that was something that was agreed to, which you already pointed out is not enforceable. One of the conditions was that we had to get at least 59% or more of the state aid paid by the state.
Right.
That was, that was really one of the principal conditions. There may have been something else there that, but that's, that's the one that I recall being the most significant.
So Alicia.
It was, the 2 million was not a condition.
So Alicia, please get the information, updates to all the commissioners as soon as possible. And also, you have Esther's phone number, correct?
We have a number. We have her number.
Good, we'll have the contact information.
Okay, we'll do, thank you.
Can you, can you just get us a copy of, and we should maybe already have it, whatever agreements exist between the city of Jersey City when they, when they transferred the property to Liberty Science Center?
I don't have that. What I have is the agreement that we proved.
Can our, can our attorney just?
Sure, we, we can make a.
Our attorney file an Oprah request to get that as quickly as possible.
You know, let us, let us try to get it. I don't know if we have to go that far.
There's a separate.
Let's try to, we'll try to get it.
There was a separate issue raised that you and I talked about and Don, Kenny and I spoke about and he didn't get back to me, which Esther raised at a forum I was at where allegedly, though that property is, I don't know, 67, maybe not, 60% completed of construction, the land under which it is still is not taxed and there are no taxes being assessed against the land. And Don was going away with his wife for a few days and he was going to come back and if you could follow up with him again tomorrow morning. I spoke to him Friday before he was leaving.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Talala Daly.
Talala Daly.
Don, Mr. Commissioner Ramon, can I say something? I just want to say something to the attorney. When you look it up, make sure you check with the JCRA. That's where the agreement is. I never read the executed agreement. I saw the agreement without the execution. There are a couple of things in there that you should know, which I'm sure you'll find. which I'm sure you'll find when you go there, that if this school is not built, which is part of the agreement, Jersey City has the right to take back that property. But that school was supposed to be built, because we gave away that property. We should not have done that. Okay, that's number one. Number two, when you dig deep, and you have to ask the city clerk, because it's on the old portal, when you dig deep, you will find that even though they presented it, the city presented it as if this was going to a non-for-profit. The non-for-profit Liberty Science Center owns this LLC called SciTech City. And you take it one step deeper, and there's another LLC, it's a for-profit organization owned by the Freedmans. Okay, and some other organizations. And so their names, the names of their company, Alpine Residential, is what is on the deed of that property, which I checked with the Hudson County website. And at the very least, they should be paying property tax on that property. So you need to look into that very deeply. Thank you.
Have you got the entire parcel or just the parcel upon which the high rises are currently being built? Is Alpine's name on?
I have to tell you, it's, it's, the, the agreement, the paperwork and the lots and all that, it's very complicated for me. They made it, that's, so you have to look very deeply, very in the city.
Yes, go ahead, next speaker.
Uh, Kalala Daly, thank you, everybody.
Is there a school there or not? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good evening, commissioners, how are you tonight? Um, I've sat back tonight and listened to what's going on as far as working for Hudson County and what we're doing as far as negotiation and what they're doing with the union and management. Um, my fellow coworkers have come up and they're asking you about the status of our hazard pay, um, salaries and things to that nature. We understand from now listening that you can't provide that. But what we're coming to you for is the help from the backlog of what's happening behind not receiving salaries and hazard pay and our overtime. We're servicing people, providing them with the help we need due to this, due to the loss of the overtime, due to not receiving the retention slash hazard pay, we fell in a slump, a majority of workers are. And the thing is, our salaries don't provide us with the help to get relief. We can't get relief because we're over income. But you can't be over income when your check is plagued with loans and debts and bills and families and things to that nature. Behind losing the overtime, people have fell behind in their rent, mortgages, car insurance, all things to that nature. So now, we're not coming to you to go in between union and management. We're going, we're coming to you now because the workers are in need of help. These workers are actually citizens. So we're not coming to you to say, we want you to tell us what's going on. We're asking you, what can you do to help us at this point? Because they've been negotiating this for a year now. We can't take another year or, oh, we gotta go back to the table. We need food on our table. So we can't say, oh, they didn't come to terms with what we wanted and this, that, and the third and other. That's not what we're asking for. What we're asking you for is a remedy to help the situation until all parties can come to a conclusion that can help everybody. We shouldn't have to come and say we need equality in a workplace when sister counties are receiving this. Last time I looked, all counties, we see the same thing. So why is there a problem with allotting us with the pay to live in this county? This, a county is expensive to live in, taxes are out the wazoo. So all we're asking is, pay us our fair share that, so that we can live here. We're not asking for anything else. It, it shouldn't be a problem to say, okay, here, take this. We're not asking for outrageous amounts, we're asking for money to live with. So when we're coming to you, we understand negotiations and all that stuff, but at the end of the day, do you understand that we have to live too? We have families. I'm a single mother. I'm doing all of this by myself. But at the end of the day, we're coming to you because maybe you have a resolution that can help the county a whole. I'm not just talking about the, the workers and the supervisor, but everybody. We're the largest union in this county. We watched everybody in neighboring counties and our building receive hazard pay. We didn't receive anything while we exempted.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I'm not gonna speak for everyone on this board, but I've witnessed everyone on this board fight for you and for your union. Everyone has their own style here. My style is we have a committee system. We do our work in the committee, behind closed doors, an executive session, and we should get the result that we want, a fair contract for you and your union. Um, I wish we had those conversations on video. I wish we had it taped, because you would see how hard we are.
It is taped, it is taped, you just can't release it.
I'm not speaking about negotiations. I'm not speaking about that. What I'm speaking about now is immediate help to us. We're not, we can't do anything with the union. We can't do anything with management. But what I'm saying now is, right now, we need help. We can't go and say, oh, we're going to negotiations anyway, oh, we gotta go back again. That's another six months. That's another six months of struggling. This is what we don't want.
We want this contract settled as bad as you do.
Yes.
Now.
It's not as bad as we do. You don't know how bad we're doing.
Almost as bad.
But believe me, we, we are all fighting for you. Again, I could speak for every one of my colleagues. I've seen them get, um, you know, sometimes hot, sometimes, you know, uh, out of their usual, um, demeanor, um, and again, we all want this settled as badly as you do, and we are working for you. Um, again, it's behind closed doors. I wish it wasn't. Um, again, there is a record of it. But, you know, I have witnessed that, and, uh, I wish I could tell you more. That's the most difficult part of this whole situation for us, because we're up here, we can't say anything. But behind closed doors, we can't fight for you, and we are fighting for you.
But we're back here, and we're asking you, oh, you're up here and you can't say anything, but we're coming.
No, no, I, I, I think what the speaker is talking about is, is a livable wage. And one of the things that, um, I'm trying to change the narrative of is when they say affordable housing. Affordable housing is not affordable housing anymore. Uh, affordable housing is based on $68,000. And I'm quite sure none of you guys make $68,000. So I, I, I think that, that's what you're talking about right now, that having a livable wage. Um, and, and I do understand, and like my, my colleague said, we, we definitely fighting for you guys, uh, behind the closed doors. We want this to be done too, you know, so.
I understand.
Bobby, go ahead. Hold on, let this commissioner, go ahead.
I want to reiterate, what happened in that back room, uh, you'd all be proud of us, I just say that. But at the end of the day, it hasn't happened yet, and I think, I'll record, if we can, a lot of the people the last several months have come up and talked the process. And I, I don't have a problem, I'm an elected official, but they think it's us. So if we could have the process, so when people come in, what the process is, because there is the union negotiations and the things we can and can't do, and can and can't say publicly. At the end of the day, we're, Commissioner Walker, the rest of the commissioners, we all sat back there, and we want this to go faster than later. I'm the last one coming to the board, I'm the newest commissioner. But I was brought to speed real quick, and I have to be honest with you, I worked for the county for 20 years. I understand where you're at. I started when I started, it was $21,000 a year. So at, at the end of the day, my goal is to make sure that we try and make this a fair process. And at the end, maybe there's even.
Go ahead, Bill.
All I would say, all, all I'm gonna, all I'm gonna say at the end of it is this. You know how much I, I, I share your frustrations. But if you don't keep coming back here over and over, and keep reminding us over and over, it ain't gonna happen. Everything that my colleagues have said, everything that they've inferred that was said in that room is true. But if you don't keep coming back, it ain't gonna happen, because other folks are gonna forget it, not here, but we gotta be reminded. We just asked, what is it? There's a date on here, and then, well, what's, are you taking our direction? Silence, crickets, right? Well, no, let's go in a closed session and talk to you about it. We didn't hear a word. So the only way you keep this on the top of an agenda is come here. I'm just letting you know, the same way you keep standing outside, change doesn't always happen quickly. And people rely on people getting frustrated and giving up. As long as I've been in public service, I've watched and seen people try to do that. Don't let that happen to you. You are making an impact. I know it doesn't seem it, because it's been two or three months. But I'm telling you, if, if you gotta switch and next meeting it's 10 other people, keep reminding us the importance of this issue and the urgency of this issue, because here's another reality. Your job's gonna get tougher soon. You see what's going on in Congress? You see what's being done with dollars? You see what's gonna happen when decisions are gonna have to be made as to whether people at certain income levels aren't gonna be able to get TANF anymore, they're not gonna be eligible, or they're gonna get a percentage of their food stamps reduced, and you're the front line. And they'll cut to some of us, and we'll try to fight for them. But your job's not gonna get easy based on what's going on in, 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 in Washington. And we should be more understanding and sympathetic to resolving their situation sooner rather than later. Because once those bills get finalized and signed in Washington, and the dollars we get, get cut, we'll learn about that next week. And, and the, not just the dollars from the administrative side, but the dollars to the, to the clients we serve are reduced, because they're being punished for something they didn't have anything to do with. Your job's gonna get harder, as will ours. We deserve to get our job to be harder, because we're elected officials.
Go ahead, Ms. Man.
Next speaker is Rashida Jackson.
Can I just ask one thing?
Why not?
Um, Commissioner Sefeli, he stated something about.
Do me a favor, please let the other speaker speak, then we'll come back to it.
Rashida Jackson.
They have to speak. Rashida. Rashida.
The other speaker is Ada Weidman.
Ada, go ahead.
That's the last speaker.
Okay, if, if any commissioners want to meet afterwards, I know I'm gonna be here to meet with those that wanted to further appoint. Glad to.
The last speaker wanted to have a question directed to me. I'm happy to.
Also, Chairman.
The county clerk is on.
Pardon, pardon me, Commissioner Sefeli. I'm reminding you that, um, Clerk Maldonado is on the line to address the issue that was raised.
Clerk Maldonado, the floor is yours.
Are you muted, Clerk Maldonado?
Walt, could you please?
Hey, you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Junior.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. How are we doing today? And can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I was actually jumping on.
Junior, from now on also, there should be a representative from your office, please, on this. One of our constituents had a very good question. Uh, she, her.
Chairman, perhaps, perhaps we can have, um, is it? Come back to the podium and
Go ahead.
Raise your issue directly with the county clerk.
Go ahead.
Hi, Junior, uh, you're familiar with my emails and Oprah requests by now. Um, I wanted to bring to the board the issue of the incorrect mailer which was sent out, which I know you're very familiar with. Um, the mailer was sent out to 90,000 individuals limited to Jersey City. There was a correction mailer sent out to just about 25,000 individuals across Hudson County. Only 11,000 of those individuals live in Jersey City. So the correction of people's voting records only impacted 11,000 individuals from that original 90,000 list. Uh, I know I've had a lot of questions. How was that list, um, you know, come up with? Um, in terms of the 90,000 people who were selected. Uh, I know you provided me a lot of information about the mailing, uh, situation of how our mail partner, you know, takes that list apart, compiles it and stuff. But I still don't fully understand what we're doing as a county to make sure that this never happens again, to make sure that we didn't have any negative voter suppression effects from this mailing, because mailings from the county are the most impactful in voter turnout. Like, done through studies. County mailings, official government mailings are the most impactful, so I just want to make sure that, especially in a super important election year for New Jersey, uh, we're not, you know, taking this issue lightly.
About the division.
Okay, Junior, did you get that?
Yeah, no, I, I got it. The, the answer is, we, we, we did a mailing that went out to Jersey City active voters, uh, from this statewide voter registration system. That then was, uh, given to the mailing house and it was sent out to households. Unfortunately, the language in the letter was confusing, as the speaker said, uh, and, and we, we, we stopped it. Uh, what we found was that the majority, the vast majority of the folks that were having confusion were the vote by mail voters, because by state stature, we have to notify anyone who had not voted in the last four years that they were gonna be removed from the list. Uh, having sent that letter, it became a little bit confusing to, confusing to all the vote by mail, uh, voters. So what we did was we sent the correct, correction letter, uh, targeting the vote by mail voters, because they're the ones that had the most questions on the issue for us. Uh, I will say we got probably 40, 40 calls in the office with questions about it. We answered every, uh, every question. We responded to every email. Uh, we, we, we thought that we had, uh, the matter, uh, under control. Uh, yes, the speaker's correct, it should not have happened, but it did happen, and we caught it, uh, at an early time. So we were able to correct it, and I think we corrected it because we haven't gotten any calls or any emails uh, after the issue first week or so.
Okay, I, I appreciate that insight, I guess, from a perspective of somebody who wouldn't, I've made mistakes at jobs before. Um, and there's a process involved in it where you have to make the correction, yes, but then you also evaluate your processes, and you make sure that this never happens again. Um, so I'm curious what the county stance is on, you know, kind of an incident kind of process, if you will, of making sure that a situation like this doesn't happen in the future.
Well, we set up protocols in the office where there are more, uh, interviewed you eyes, uh, looking at everything that goes out. We also have, um, the county, uh, Executive's Office Communication Team that's gonna evaluate where we send them out to make sure that they have eyes and make recommendations and edits as necessary. So we think that we have, uh, put protocols in place that allow for that not to happen again.
Okay, that's great to hear. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then in regards to the issue of low voter turnout and engagement in our county, um, I know we've talked about that briefly previously, but I am still curious how your office, in light of this mailing, might view that role that the county plays in engaging voters in elections and making sure that, you know, we're, uh, providing a level playing field for Hudson County on the state of New Jersey and making our voices heard, uh, in an equal way.
Well, look, my, my office, uh, is responsible for vote by mails, for the handling of the process. Uh, voter engagement is not something that we participate in, though if the Board of Commissioners and the county wanna add money to our budget, we'd be more than glad to be able to do things that are gonna, uh, try to get the voter, uh, number, the voter turnout numbers higher. Uh, but at this juncture, the, uh, the budget that we have is specifically geared to, you know, uh, vote by mail, provisional emergency ballots and machine ballots, so is when limited and what we could do in terms of voting engagement. We depend on the, the parties, the Democratic and Republican parties to be able, and the candidates running to be able to, to, uh, uh, produce in the engagement area, and we, we'll, uh, be there to assist in every, anywhere we can as long as we have the monies to be able to do, do so. Excuse me.
Yeah, um, I just want to point out, um, Camden County, uh, and other counties across New Jersey, we, we get different communications in Hudson County versus the rest of New Jersey. Camden County sent a mailer to newly registered voters that basically had the vote by mail application filled out for them if they wanted to mail that back to the office to register to vote by mail. So I think what Junior's saying, you know, there's a limited budget, et cetera, but I think as Hudson County, we really have to take this seriously and see like, what are we doing as a county to make sure we're enabling people to vote, uh, and see like, what are we doing as a county to make sure we're enabling people to vote, uh, in elections going forward? Um, so that's, that's what I had to say.
Yeah. Thank you. If I can interject about Camden County, um, Camden is the, the highest vote by mail county in the state of New Jersey. They probably do 50, 60,000. And the reason is because all the mayors and elected officials in that county have bought into the system, and thus, uh, they have additional monies that are allocated to the county clerk's budget to be able to do, to do so. So unfortunately, we don't have that additional monies, but I'm, I'm glad to sit down with the commissioners and talk about where we could do to move forward on that.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just, just following up on, uh, the conversation we were having before, because it's, um, as frustrating it is for them, not as frustrating, but I, I'm starting to get very frustrated with this process. Because we've been asking over and over again to get this settled. So can we make sure that we have Sean Diaz at the, uh, Diaz at the next meeting for another update?
Because is this with regards to my?
No, no, no.
Go see the county executives.
As I explain, as I explained to my colleagues and administrators, administration who was involved in this process. Before I became a central office member in the Bay Area Public Schools, the teachers and union members would go sometimes five years without a contract. Since I've been there, we've never had a contract be overdue. Now setting contracts a year early. It can be done. I was told two weeks ago that this would be taken care of, and it's not. The second thing is, every Board of Education that I know has a representative on the negotiating team. I don't know why we are not on the negotiating team, one member, but at least we have a say in the process. It's a year late. Two weeks ago, I told, I was told it was gonna be handled. So please have Sean Diaz at the next meeting, so he give us an update, so we have some information, so we could get this thing worked out.
I got a, your idea. I got a better idea. Until the matter's resolved, Sean Diaz sits in the audience at every meeting and listens just as we listen to, to the issues raised by the people that are here.
I agree.
Then it'll start to get moved. That, I'm gonna take a good recommendation and make it a better one.
And I'll make it even a better one. Let's have, uh, at the, at the risk of maybe being, uh, an unfair labor practice, let's invite the union bargaining agents to sit next to Sean at our meetings. So he can hear, he can hear his members' complaints.
Chairman.
Said that, yes.
There is no further business to come before the board?
I, I, excuse me, but there was a question that one of the speakers.
The union is here. For the record, the union is here.
Good, okay. Well, that's great. I, 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 but, but there was a question that one of the speakers had to me specifically. And I want to entertain that question.
We'll get off, Al, we'll have them call you directly.
Well, they can call me very good here. I'm here.
There's a motion to, to adjourn. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Do you need?
No, I don't. Can I, can I ask the clerk?